All right, you need to come to work. This is a committee of the whole meeting of the Board of Education of District 96. Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Barsadi, Mr. Hunt, Ms. Kleiber, Mr. Marhol, Mr. Miller, Ms. Murphy, Mr. Riga.
President.
Thank you.
Thanks, Margie. To this point, everyone, welcome everyone. We've got a lot of things to talk about tonight, so it'll be very interesting. At this point, is there any public comment? If there's no public comment, then does any board member have any proposed changes to the agenda? If not, we move right into the committee meetings. First committee is Finance and Facilities. Rich.
Thanks, Joe. I'm going to invite Mr. Fenton up to begin a very full agenda relative to finance here.
Thank you.
Do you guys have a copy of the audit report with you? So, the first thing I wanted to touch on briefly was just the management letter. It was just a two-page letter directed to the board, just with our comments for the audit for the year. The only one we have on here was material journal entries, so there were journal entries made, considered to be large enough or significant enough that had we left them alone, the financial statements would have been significantly enough misstated. This is something that a lot of school districts, governments, audited entities get. It's just, you know, that's kind of why you have auditors, is to make sure the numbers are right as best we can. In addition to that, there has been an issue sort of rolling forward for a few years where the way your guys' books work is they're actually sort of in the care of the township treasurer, and you guys can, you know, sort of suggest your entries and whatever, and it's up to them as to whether or not to post them. And audit adjustments for the past several years have not been made in accordance with that, so that is actually included in the little note on the management letter. But other than that, nothing else really. Everybody was very pleasant to work with, as always. No issues with management or anything else, so any questions on that particular piece?
Could you explain more the commentary about the difference between the township trustees' books and ours?
Yeah, so the township trustees, or the township treasurer, they keep the books for not only you guys, but several other districts in the area. And so you guys don't actually have, I guess, complete autonomy over your own records. They keep all the cash, for instance. The cash is all held, you know, in their name, and you, receipts for you guys, like property taxes and things, go directly into the account. You don't actually, the money doesn't come into the district office at all. And then likewise with the checks that you write, you actually submit like a request for payment to vendors, employees, you know, what have you. And in addition to that, any financial statement adjustments, whether something accidentally got posted to the wrong account, or, you know, anything that you would just, you want to clean up, I guess, if it wasn't correct in the first place, you have to submit that and have them approve that and sort of let them post it on their own. And it's the case with, and it's not only the case with this particular, with proviso township, it's the case with, you know, several other townships that we do, township treasurers, where sometimes they make the adjustments that we propose as part of the audit, sometimes they don't. But really, you know, from an audit standpoint, it always makes the most sense to start with the most possible correct numbers. And obviously, if the first step is going back and making sure that the previous audits' corrected numbers were actually rolled into the treasurer's books, that's not the preferred step. Did that help answer your question at all?
Yes.
Okay.
The partially process of our financial requests for, requests for payment and the fact that it has to roll through the township treasurer and their control over records that we don't necessarily, obviously, the difference in control, that's the biggest thing.
Correct. Yeah. And I know, you know, going forward, I think that there is a plan in place to, that they are upgrading software, and then everybody's upgrading software. So I don't know with the new software if there's going to be changes in controls where you guys have more access to do these things or whatever. So that'll be obviously a question for next year, when that actually gets implemented. But, you know, it was just something that we want to do, at least bring to the board's attention, that, you know, on an annual basis, we, which is not, you know, necessarily to say that it's something that is management's fault, it's just something that would be best to be corrected somehow. Anything else on that before we get into the report itself?
Thank you.
So, the audit report itself, there's obviously the cover page and then the table of contents. The first two documents in there really are your opinion letters. The first one is just the opinion of the audit, and then the second one is an additional opinion letter required for government auditing standards, which is something that school districts are required to have as part of their audit. You guys had an unmodified opinion, which is the, it basically means that we didn't find anything significant enough in the financial statements that we didn't feel comfortable reporting on, we didn't feel it was correct, nothing like that. Everything looked, you know, other than the audit adjustments, which, you know, happens basically everywhere, there was no other issues with that. And then after the opinion letters, there is the management's discussion and analysis. That's the next several pages. This section, if you just want kind of a quick synopsis and overview of what the financial statements look like, you'd go here. So the first page sort of discusses the financial highlights. The couple of things I wanted to point out in there, the current year operations, increased net position, just a little over $400,000. And then the ending fund balances, so the net position is the government-wide picture, and then the fund balances are, they don't take into account the long-term picture of long-term debt, fixed assets and those things. And those balances also went up a little over $800,000. There is a caveat with that, which I will go into in a bit, but just kind of going back through the rest of the financial, or the management discussion and analysis, there's a couple of pages just overview of the financial statements. There's a summarized version of the statement of net position, the statement in, the statement of activities, the change in net position for the year, all of which essentially say that the district is in good shape, so. There's a bit of an analysis. There's a brief section on budgetary highlights with regards to the general fund, and then the main thing to notice with that, revenue, in the general fund revenues and expenditures both exceeded what was budgeted. You guys don't budget for the on-behalf payments for TRS. If you take out the TRS portion, you still had more revenue than you budgeted for, and your expenditures in the general fund were actually lower than you budgeted for by just about $300,000. So if it weren't for that piece, that's, it's just a wash essentially. There's, it's an addition to both revenues and expenditures required every year as part of TRS and the Teachers' Health Insurance Fund. Without those things, you guys were still within your budget range for the general Then there's a section about capital assets and long-term debt. There's a brief discussion about economic factors, next year's budgets and rates, and then requests for information. If anybody is reading these financial statements who, obviously, this wouldn't be for you, you guys know where to go to request more financial information, but if anybody else is reading these, any external parties, that would be where they go. Questions on the management discussion and analysis before we get into the financial statements? Okay. So in the financial statements, the first two pages are, or the first two statements are the statement of net position and the statement of activities. Those again are the government-wide financial statements, so they give you the picture that includes the long-term piece, so things like long-term debt, capital assets, those things are included on here as assets and liabilities rather than as a current inflow and outflow of cash. The one thing that you may notice on the statement of activities, towards the bottom, the change in accounting principle, which we will talk about a little bit later, has decreased the net position by $13 million, and that's because the government decided that they couldn't leave well enough alone and changed the way that they wanted governments to report other post-employment benefits. So, like I said, we'll talk about that in a minute. The statements after that are the fund financial statements, so these are the ones where there are more current picture. Any payments on long-term debt, these are categorized as revenues and expenses rather than as a reduction in liabilities. Payments for fixed assets, land, equipment, things like that are categorized as additions to, or also classified as expenses rather than as additions to assets. And within those, there are also reconciliations to show you how we got from the fund financial statements to the government-wide financial statements. The next financial statement is fiduciary funds, so that's just your agency funds, your activity funds, and that's the basic financial statements. Questions on those before we get to the footnotes? Okay. The first footnote, and most of these footnotes you have every year, so I won't really go into detail with them. The first footnote is your significant accounting policies, just describing basically what a school district is, how it operates, and the specific policies related to this school district. Then the rest of the footnotes sort of go in order of how they would appear in the financial statements, so deposits and investments, capital assets, long-term liabilities, inter-fund balances, property taxes. There is a section in here of expenditures over budget. Other than the general fund, there were a couple, basically three funds that were fairly close to being within budget, but just slightly over. The debt service fund, the transportation fund, and the fire prevention and safety fund, the last of which I think just ended up being a timing issue with tax refunds, so not even really anything there. We talk about deficit fund balance due to a transfer a couple of years ago from the transportation fund to the operations and maintenance fund, I believe.
Right.
There, there's a deficit fund balance in that one, and then again, the fire prevention and safety fund has a deficit fund balance again because of tax refunds on money that you guys had already transferred out, so that should not be too difficult to clean up. Brief section on operating leases. Note 10 is your pension footnote, which talks about TRS and IMRF. Again, just sort of the actuarial assumptions used in determining your pension liability for both of those, and then changes in them. And then note 11 is the post-employment benefit section, which is the, the new section this year, the new standard. It was called GASB 75. And basically, what they wanted to do is figure out, okay, governmental entities have employees who can stay on insurance past retirement. Whether or not the district pays for that, their rates may still be affected by, you know, these people going forward. We want to assign a value to what, to that portion, both in what the district may pay and then, you know, the difference between having somebody on the insurance who will be 70 versus somebody on the insurance who will be 30. So it's a lot of actuarial assumptions, it's a lot of new stuff, and essentially, there's not a lot that a district can do about fixing it, because it is not normal for any entity, really, be it a governmental entity, school district, city, even a business, to keep funds in a trust like you would with, say, IMRF or TRS. You're not going to put money away to help pay for future health benefits down the road. Really, the only way that you can lower, lower a liability like that is to tweak the health benefits, which, you know, that's, that would be something to talk about with union negotiations, and then obviously, the teacher retirement system, you kind of, you're kind of stuck there anyway. So that was the new big standard for this year. It hit a lot of districts, probably more, more so than in the past. When you guys had the pension one come on board a few years ago, I think you had probably a similar sort of hit, where all of a sudden, it looked like you had all this money, and now it looks like you have slightly less money. And it's the same thing, but again, it's not necessarily reflective of your current, your current outlook or needs cash-wise. Basically, just comes down to, again, a lot of actuarial assumptions and things of that nature. So, that's footnote 11. And then we talk about the joint venture, risk management contingencies. Note 16 is the net position adjustment that we made for the OPEB information, so that's the one that ties back to the statement of activities. Note 17 is your legal debt limitation. And then note 18, the change in accounting principle is the way that we were doing it before GASB 75 was implemented. It just basically figured out what your current year obligation would be for other post-employment benefits. So with GASB 75, that went away, so we put $50,000 back on your books while we took $13 million off. So, doesn't really seem fair, but that's what it is. Questions on the footnotes? Okay. And then the next section is required supplementary information. There's a couple of required tables for IMRF, a couple of required tables for TRS, and then again, new this year, there's THIS, and then other post-employment benefits, so that's anybody who is on IMRF and would also affect the district from another post-employment benefit perspective. And then there are your budget-to-actual statements. So, in required supplemental information, there's the general fund, operations and maintenance, transportation, the IMRF and social security fund, and the TORT fund. And then there's just a couple of footnotes regarding that. And then in your other, I guess, supplemental information, it has how we got to the general fund, which combines the education and working cash funds. I'm going to talk about those, debt service, fire prevention, safety, capital projects. And then there are a couple more tables, a couple more schedules about agency funds, the per capita tuition charge that comes right out of your school district AFR that gets submitted to ISBE. And then there's a statistical section with miscellaneous statistics that I think have always historically been included in your audit report. So that's basically, that's the audit report in a nutshell. Do you guys have any questions about any of that?
Any questions on the audit?
Otherwise, I'd just like to say again, the staff was, Jim and his staff were very, very nice to work with. We do apologize for the delay. Obviously, we don't normally have this meeting in February. In October, the, one of the, one of the parts with the new GASB 75 statute was, had to do with the Teachers' Health Insurance Fund, and that is an actuary report that's actually prepared statewide for every district. They basically go in and audit TRS and THIS for that. In October, right before all of the school district reports were due, the firm who audited it actually came out and said, hey, we found out that we did this wrong, it's going to take us a couple of months to fix it. So I think they got it fixed somewhere between Christmas, or Thanksgiving and Christmas, and then with the holidays, and the fact that every single accrual-based audit sort of had to wait for those numbers to be correct. It kind of got pushed back in here, so we do apologize for the delay, but, you know, appreciate your patience with that, and we thank you for you guys and Jim and the staff for working with us. And if you have any questions, always feel free.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Nice work on that. You're, I think officially your first audit here at District 96.
Yeah, we'll do, we can get the books in sync with the audit, and I think that'll help when we're looking at history versus projections, too, to have, make sure everything's tied together.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Sure.
So, the second item in the agenda is school fees overview.
Right. So in your packet, we want to get in the routine of bringing recommended school fees for next year, and so what I have is a table of all the fees that we charge, and a little bit of history there. You can see, they've been fairly consistent with some increases. But why I wanted to set the process to be more routine is to recommend inflation increase every year. So what I did was build in, this year, a 1.9% increase with our CPI number, is that's what affects our tax levies. So we'll be consistent with that. But instead of kind of rounding to the penny on some of these fees, then I just went to the $5. So the real number is hidden behind these rounded numbers, and I'll keep adding, and if there's low CPIs, it may take a couple of years before it jumps to the next $5. And you can see where some of them did, like sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, they were big enough where the 1.9% pushed it to the next five. The only thing where we didn't use that type of formula is the pre-K tuition, and we looked at that kind of in isolation and decided to hold that flat at $3,000, partly because it's already out there and we're already publicized that. And we also want to do a comparison of the rest of the market, too. We're not looking to be so low that we take business away from the community preschools and not looking to increase it so much that we have a lot more cost than revenue. So that one's a little special, and we're going, we recommend keeping it at 3,000 for this year, but being real thorough on that, it's obviously one of the bigger numbers on here. I'd like to plan on bringing it maybe a month or two earlier next year, so we have a lag time to think about the recommendations before they get publicized. So anyway, these are the recommendations for this year, if you have any questions.
I think the, I think the format is exactly what the board needs to consider this information, so I appreciate you putting this together. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Fenton about this?
More of a comment, just I'm glad you're looking at the other providers in the community, and we're trying to be fair to everybody. I was, wasn't quite sure why it hadn't gone up, but your explanation helps, and thank you.
It's right in the range, but I want to be a little more rigorous with that next time, and I'll bring more comparisons of the choices that people in our area have.
Good. No, thank you, and that's the right thing to do.
I think it's useful, just having been like a preschool mom recently, to have a monthly breakdown, because we're so used to that monthly payment.
Oh, right. Okay, yeah.
It's just a tiny thing.
I could put it down at the bottom as an asterisk and down.
Yeah.
There's different payment plans.
Just for them to see what their plan would be, and what the difference is. Whenever you go to the private preschools, it's always a monthly fee, and it might be nice for them to compare, just to be able to quickly look at.
Yeah, I'll, I'll update that.
Yeah, not a big deal.
Get it back out, and I think we're going to ask for approval next month.
So we're going to bring it back up at the board meeting to actually have the board take action on approving the fees, but this would be sort of the initial discussion, so that we'd be able to address it as an action item.
I echo the comments of the other board members. I think automatically increasing it by inflation is the right thing to do, because if we don't do that, with your rounding scheme, which I also like, if we don't do that, obviously, we're cutting fees, so $1, which doesn't really make sense, given their costs are actually going up faster than inflation.
Yep.
Great. Okay.
So we'll bring it back on February 20th, maybe.
I'll add that line, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on next to part two of the long-range facility planning. Martha, were you going to kick us off on this?
I am going to kick off.
Thank you.
So this is, as Rich said, this is part two, and part one was back on January 16th, but for people that might be joining us by YouTube and maybe some new audience members, just kind of give a brief recap here of the work and kind of the why, but there has been now a very hard-working facility advisory committee. Many are in the audience, and two are on the board, Linda and Rich, so again, continuing to thank that committee. We've also added someone not officially on our committee, but somebody kind of adding to the equation, and I'm going to introduce him now, and that's Ramesh Nair, who is likely joining us as an owner's representative to assist with project work as we begin to move forward. And one of the things that we have embedded in the presentation tonight are cost estimates, and so part of one of the things we will address in greater detail at the end is an opportunity to kind of hear directly from Ramesh about those cost estimates. But for now, welcome, and he's been a great partner sort of in this preliminary stage in helping us sort of get everything organized and moving forward. But again, just a reminder to everybody that we had very specific strategic plan goals back in 2015 to really optimize and reconfigure our spaces to consider a different location for the district office, which has just been realized. As a matter of fact, we closed on the district office on Monday. Where's Jim, right, on Monday? And also considering how we could have space for full-day kindergarten if that were to come to be eventual recommendation. Also to look at our playgrounds and our outdoor learning spaces. We engaged the community in a community survey back in September of 2017. We had, I always like sharing 214 responses, because for that, for us, that was a lot of good information coming from a good number of people from our community. We did a demographic study, just looking at the audit report, too. They also publish our enrollment there in the audit, and our enrollment continues to sort of steadily go up, up and up, and over the past 10 years has gone up really more than steadily, but really perhaps more dramatically. We've also hired DLA architects. The board hired them through RFQ process back two years ago, or is it three, two? So you're going to hear, continue to hear from Kerry Matlock tonight, who is our representative from DLA. We also had focus groups last time when we talked more specifically about Ames. You really heard about an Ames visioning process. There was a very robust process that happened at Ames. At the other three schools, as we were looking at kind of projects of less magnitude, our focus groups were really with the principals and a couple key leaders in terms of looking at the educational needs within the school. Early on, though, Kerry actually had met with children and staff at all of our schools when we gathered that initial information. So what I want to continue to share is that just this, you know, this is a thorough process, there are a lot There are a lot of people that are contributing to this process, and really, the Facilities Advisory Committee continues to be just a key part to this process. That committee continues to meet, will continue to meet, that these, the Facility Advisory Committee process has really been happening kind of simultaneously, concurrently throughout, throughout all of the work. One of the things that really started to become clear through conversations with the Board of Education and conversations through the Facilities Advisory Committee was really kind of getting clearer and clearer throughout this process about the needs and goals that we were really trying to meet. We've talked a lot about kind of an equitable distribution of our improvements that we want to make at all of our schools. And so we really worked hard to define what that meant. And we agreed that every school needed a secured front entrance. We agreed that all schools needed to account for all existing itinerant and student support areas. So that meant all small group learning opportunities really needed the appropriate kinds of spaces. So children working in hallways, children working in sort of less-than-ideal spaces were something that really was a goal within all of this work to improve and change that. We knew we needed the appropriate number of classrooms, including that possibility of full-day kindergarten, a place to eat, and conduct large group projects. So I kind of said it equals a multipurpose room, but you see that kind of defined a little bit differently in each of them, but really that consideration of where are children gonna eat, and where would they do the kinds of projects that might take a couple different classrooms, a whole grade level, a special project? How do we, how do we make that happen, and where do we make that happen in each of our schools? As, as everybody knows, that we have acquired some additional properties. I just mentioned the district office, but two residential properties that were next to Ames. We've now acquired both of those. And how did we really leverage that new property in a way that benefited the entire district? So that became a really key part of all of our conversations. To alleviate overcrowding across all of our schools, the other goal that really became identified is this idea of a multi-section option for Blythe Park School. And that would mean relocating our early learners from Blythe to the addition at Ames School. That was something we talked about a lot at our last meeting. And then this other goal of separating play and parking. And this isn't, this is one of the goal areas that we're gonna talk about more as we move forward. We're not going to dig in as much about the separation of play and parking tonight in our presentation, but it's something you're gonna continue to hear more about as we move forward. We have an RFQ out, actually, the RFQ has been out specifically to look at the Central Hauser campus to separate play and parking, that we know that there is a particular and unique challenge there. So that is one of the next agenda items for the Facilities Advisory Committee to look at, is to look at those responses to the RFQ and make a plan for moving forward, to really dig in much more specifically about that. So that is an ongoing goal, but that is one that you're gonna hear a little bit less about tonight. So the other one is this idea of renovating and reconfiguring library and media centers to really think about that future learning, and what does a library really look like, and how do we make sure that really is that vital and integrated area, and really a hub of our education and hub of each of our schools. So with that, we're gonna kind of move through Blythe, Central, and Hollywood in alphabetical order here. So I'm gonna have Kesmira come up and share some about the specific needs at Blythe Park, and then Carrie's gonna join Kesmira and talk about the specific concept design ideas. And there you got your.
Okay. Good evening. How are you? So as Martha had alluded to, our primary need for Blythe Park would be a secured front entrance, just to promote the, and maintain the safety of all of our students. We, right now, in looking at the second bullet, we have a very large, relatively underutilized auditorium, and we're seeking to possibly update this so that it remains as a performance area, and is enhanced in that way, but it also can serve as an area for additional and purposeful learning. And then the last bullet point there speaks to the additional classrooms. And as Martha alluded to as well, the, the possibility of creating Blythe so that it's a multi-section school, just to enhance the learning opportunities of the students that we currently serve, and hopefully more in the future.
All right. The first option we're gonna look at, I'm gonna walk over here. Just so I can point a little bit better, is the secured entrance option. And conceptually, I would like to remind everyone, we talked about this last time, but they are diagrammatic in nature, representative of space allocation, entrances. They're not the finite detail of projects. They do not include exactly where doors will be located. They do not really include the exact shape of an addition or renovation. It is representative of a concept at this time. So let's just bear that in mind when we're talking about this, as these will be refined as we move into the next phase called schematic design. So for now, the concept here for solving the secured entrance option, currently, the existing office exists in this space right here, which is not adjacent to the front door of the building, which is here. In order to provide a secured entrance option, the kind that you enjoy at Ames and Hauser, that adjacency needs to take place. In order to provide that, we have suggested to create a small addition within this alcove that exists, keeping a representative recess in the facade of the building, understanding that we have to work within the context of historical preservation and within the commission of the village, and understanding that there are a lot of repercussions for that. And we will move forward sensitively to that process. But that would create an adjacency and flip that office to this classroom and put the classroom in the back of the building. And so then the front office would be located here, and the vestibule for entry would be located here. This would also allow us to expand that front office a little bit to create a larger reception area, which currently is a little cramped, as Kesmira might be able to explain a little bit further. But that is option one, and it's pretty, a simple solution, although understanding might be under a different timeframe than some of the other projects that we're talking about today because of this, the historic nature of this building. So this is a little bit closer view of that, and as you can see, there's a majority of this is renovation. And again, this addition may be a little bit more recess, maybe a little bit differently configured, but the idea here is that the entrance remains in the same exact spot that it does today, and that's very important for the context of this site and the community.
Okay, so the design option one, it takes care of the secured front entrance, accounts for all the existing itinerants and student support areas. I'm gonna let Martha elaborate on.
So the appropriate number of classrooms doesn't really. You know, until we figure out the multi-section nature of it, so we really marked that with an asterisk.
Yeah. Leverages the new property acquisitions, alleviates overcrowding across schools, allows for the movement of early learners program from Blythe to Ames. The separate play and parking is gonna be addressed in a, in a separate.
And actually, it's really kind of not applicable. Blythe actually has a nice separation of play and parking, their configuration.
Total square footage added, 730, but 1,900 square feet renovated at a cost of $860,000.
The second option for Blythe Park adds a little bit more flexibility to the district, gaining some of that classroom space. As we already discussed, the possibility of moving the pre-kindergarten classrooms over to Ames, if there's an expansion there, would free up three classrooms to begin with. So in addition to that, we're trying to figure out a way, how to gain some more classroom space here as well, to provide a little bit more than a one-section building. So gathering some flexibility and adding it to your district. Obviously, there are educational benefits, I think, that were discussed last time, for a two-section building versus a one-section building, which the educators in the room are much better to speak to than, than I. But this is the problem that we were trying to solve.
Repurposes might be a better word than multipurpose room?
This particular one does not. This is just an intermediate, an intermediate solution, which, this one just adds a classroom within this alcove on the backside. Does the exact same thing that I discussed in option one with the secured entrance, but we add a classroom here and fill that alcove.
I think it's because the current multipurpose room is yellow, as in renovation on this project. Is that what you're asking, Joel?
Yes, that is.
And the concept behind that is that they could eat in the gymnasium space as well. Or we could leave that alone, and still there, we would be gaining four additional classrooms, because those three would be relocated to Ames, plus, plus this one. Otherwise, we'd be gaining five. Those are options. Again, the key with this option is to provide some flexibility.
So, so just to clarify, this option could not house two full sections of every grade?
That's correct. That's why it's called one and a half sections.
Right. So it doesn't, like, the classrooms, when you're looking at them, while you count them up on this one, and it could be 12 with the multipurpose room.
Right.
We're still not accounting for art and the specials. So even by just adding, I think the, the point of this plan was even by adding the additional classroom, it's still, it still could not be a full two-section school with the appropriate amount of space.
Absolutely.
So this does allow for flexibility to have, you know, certain grades be two and not, but it, by just adding the one classroom, it wouldn't fulfill like a two-section.
But we get, we get some additional classrooms simply if we move early learners to Ames.
Yeah. And that's what this is, that's what this is accounting for, is those three classrooms, those three classrooms that the early learners occupy would be moved, so that, that's why you would be getting four additional classrooms. The one new classroom, but the three classrooms that the early learners occupy.
Right. So any other questions with that? If Don can explain the totality.
Okay, so option two pretty much addresses everything as in option one, except it does also create multi-section option for Blythe School. Adds a total of 1,800 square feet with 3,200, 3,200 square feet renovated at a cost of 1.8 million.
And then that third option is what we just discussed, is that the full two-section with the renovation of the multipurpose room. And so obviously, the renovation is a little bit more increased here, and that multipurpose room becomes a little bit more of a versatile, versatile space in that it is included, so the auditorium gets renovated to something that's a little bit more flexible, that you can utilize for different types of curriculum, as well as a dining area. And that's the difference between option two and option three. Again, still including the secured entrance, as previously discussed.
Right. The big difference is we renovate the auditorium space. Keep it performance, but it would likely become music instruction, the band and orchestra, which are kind of the small group opportunities that happen kind of throughout the week, would likely be assigned to that space.
Right.
Now, right now, that room has a sloped floor.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that.
Does this become an extra-tall room?
We'd have to correct the rake, at least a portion of it, which is the pitch of the floor. So yes.
But, but in the design, the idea would be that to preserve the performance space as well. So even though you're, you know, right now, it's a sloped with fixed chairs, you still have the stage and areas, an area to have.
Correct. There'd still be a performance space. It just would look a little bit different.
So that wouldn't be removed from Blythe Park. It would still be.
You just wouldn't have that performance feeling.
Which is what this drug shows. The stage remains.
Right. I just wanted to make sure, you know, say it out loud, it was clear that the idea is not to take away an auditorium.
No.
But you create a more versatile space that's.
Provides for a number of uses, as opposed to just a performance space in, in a band and orchestra area.
So how, how hard do you think it would be to, in terms of the areas where you're proposing to add some classrooms or entrances on that sort of left side, yeah? How hard would, do you think it would be to make that, if we were to do something like that, make it match the appearance of the rest of the building, so that would look natural, as opposed to, oh my God, this is.
Obviously, that's the, that is the complete intent and requirement in the nature of this building. So we would have to, and we have done that in the past. It's just a matter of kind of maybe keeping this recess, so the facade looks the same from the street approach, is the most significant look of the building, obviously. There's a lot of, a lot of areas that need to be addressed with that, and a lot more study that needs to take place, and a lot more conversations that have to happen with the village, but that is, that is.
But you think it's possible?
I do think it's possible. I do.
It changes that hallway feeling, though. It's currently all sunlight.
A breezeway.
Yes.
And the glass can still be incorporated into all of this. I don't envision it not having glazing at all, or glass. It would be just a different type. Yeah. So those are things, those details, though, would need to be studied, and what that impact would be visually, so that's something that we would have to get into. Obviously, this is a little trickier of a solution than dealing with Ames.
Was there any thought just to changing the entry, sorry, moving the principal's office and the vestibule and the workroom, et cetera, to what you're defining as classroom number three, and making it a side entrance into that, similar to what we have at Hollywood right now?
You could, except that would change the, the entrance to the building, which is a, I think, significant.
Well, but you, but if you look at Hauser, you have the two doors, and then the interior doors that go directly into the hallway, but then there's the side entrance during the off-hours where people are directed.
Mm-hmm. There's definitely, we definitely could do that. There's not.
That's all.
Yeah.
And depending on potentially how things would go with, like, historic, we might be looking at a different option.
Absolutely, as we get into it a little bit further.
So it's option three, essentially renovating the auditorium to make it that true multipurpose area, and that increases the total of renovated square footage up to 5,400 at a cost of 2.2 million.
So just to be clear, option three, you're saying that would, that would be sufficient to accommodate two, two full sections?
Yes.
Okay. Two full sections, account for art and music, obviously, and a place to eat, and but it requires that modification of the auditorium.
So that's, the auditorium's 2,200 square feet, which is quite a bit of trade, and you would be able to, you know, accommodate the specials.
Now, are these, are the cost estimates mostly just assumed on the basis of it costs X dollars per square foot to renovate and X dollars per square foot to add on, or does, is the additional difficulty of perhaps fixing that rake accounted for?
Well, I'm gonna let Ramesh talk to that a little bit.
So I'm gonna actually give.
Should we wait till the end?
Do we wanna wait till the end? Are we okay with that? And then we can kind of go over all of it.
Yeah.
We're putting costs out here, so.
So then the actual, well, did we get to the recommendation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is it one before? Okay.
So the committee is thinking about the, recommend option three.
Option three is the recommendation.
As we look at the needs, and we've talked about with, with parents and with community, as well as with my staff and with, with the board and the district leadership, the needs of Central are pretty clear. Secured front entrance has been a concern for a long time. Accessibility to, with an addition of an elevator. Essentially, there are four floors within my building. In fact, I was met with, I had an email from a parent this evening regarding a student who broke his leg and will be in a cast from his toe to his hip, a third grader who has class on the second floor, and art and music are downstairs on the lowest level on the opposite side of the building. So there's a lot of process that my nurses and I are gonna have to go through in the next couple of days before the student returns to school. An elevator would have solved a lot of those issues. So I think it's very relevant, and it even became more so this evening. A multipurpose space for lunch and large group learning experiences. We all know there's been the issue of my students certainly having lunch over at Hauser, the impact on the schedule. I know the board has had lots of discussions about start times with Hauser and what's best for them, and my impact on their schedule when my students eat lunch in that building causes some, large group learning space that we could utilize for lunch would help address that concern for both schools, would have an impact in both spaces. Account for existing itinerants and student support areas. Got a lot of different staff with the size of my building, and sometimes the instructional spaces are not the most conducive to student learning. Do the best with what we have, but some of the proposals and the plan will help alleviate a lot of the concerns. Then obviously, the relocation of the school's nurse's office. It actually is in Hauser's campus. If you have to pick up a student from my building because they're sick, you have to go up or down four flights of stairs, small or large, to get to that student that's in the nurse's office. Not the best locations in proximity for a parent or for a four or six student that needs support. So with those things in mind, there's a proposal that we have.
In Central, the option here, and as I get into this a little bit more, hopefully explain. explain why there's really only one option that we're describing here today, the magnitude of which seems to make some sense after you understand the building in a little bit more detail, is very limiting, the site is very limiting in how we can address handicap accessibility, just because of the nature of the exterior of the building, its historic presence on the site, its historic landmark presence, and the fact that there is a ramp that currently exists down to the lower level, that is the closest thing that we have to an ADA accessible ramp, without changing the exterior look of the building a great deal in the site, so that's very important to note. There are other ways to accomplish this, however, they are of more significant interruption of the site and changes to the building that would be required in order to accomplish that, so there are other ways to do this, but this is the less invasive, if you will. And so, similar to what we're doing at Blythe, we have the flipping of a classroom to get that adjacency of the front entrance of the building to the office. Currently, there's a classroom here and the office is here, once you enter the building, you gain access to the corridor prior to checking into the front office. We want to eliminate that option and create a lockdown situation from that vestibule to the office. In order to do that, in this on this level, you would need to relocate the office closer to the front of the building. Also, we've relocated the nurse from an area that exists back here and down one floor and a half, and relocated the nurse up into the adjacent area of the office, which is obviously important, as Pete discussed. In addition to that, we've created a ramp from this area, there's a set of steps here right now, and instead eliminated those steps and created a ramp, and I'll get to exactly why that is, but we're trying to gain access to this elevator that we are putting into the courtyard, which the beauty of that is that it's not going to touch the exterior of the building, it will be completely hidden, which would be very attractive from a standpoint of the village approval, because they would be most likely be able to approve that since it's hidden within the context of the building and not affecting the aesthetics of anything. Although, there's a lot of unknowns related to that, and obviously, the site and, you know, the the condition of the soil and just, you know, how we can tie into that, that's conceptually, that's where we would like to tie in an elevator. In order to do that, we have to provide, since we have to go upstairs to get to this, that's not an ADA accessible entrance, obviously, so we will utilize the ramp that goes downstairs and into this vestibule and create a ramp, there's another set of stairs here, we would eliminate those and create a ramp down to access this elevator, which then would allow you to go up and access that front office. It is a little bit of circuitous route, however, it is accessible, and it would be accessible once you get into the building, which is much more than it is currently, as we've already discussed. Since we are vacating the building from the district office perspective, we have this space available. One of the goals of the committee was to find a space for dining for Central students, because currently, they're conflicted with Hauser traffic in that cafeteria, and would alleviate some of that load from the cafeteria in Hauser by having a space for them in Central. Currently, we don't have any free space for that function, but now, we can access where the district was and utilize it. It would take some remodeling, there are load-bearing walls in there, and there's a lot of things we have to figure out yet, however, there is space that can be allocated for that. What that looks like exactly needs to be refined and needs to be studied, however, we can gather a great deal of space over 2,000 square feet, which is good, and that's about what we're going to need for the capacity that we're dealing with. We're also gaining some small group learning down here, which is desperately needed as well. You can see that a little bit better in this picture. We can also access the second floor, you can access these three classrooms with that. Here, it's a little trickier to limit to put a ramp in, because we have the stairs located over here versus, and it's right in front of a washroom, so we're unable to access the rest of the building with a ramp, however, we are gaining three more classes on that level. And then we also have the possibility of accessing the highest level, those two spaces, however, the elevator would just open up into one of those spaces, which is a consideration as well, but can be done.
I was gonna say, this is one of the things we talked about a fair amount in the committee meetings, you know, the the tower, which now, technology and special education are going to come out of the tower and be part of the district office, they've always been part of the district office, but geographically located in the same office, we don't want to just let that space go, but if it's not accessible, it becomes very problematic space, so this idea of the elevator, you know, making sure students can get up there, appearance, even like we talked about being conference room, and we talked about a lot of different options for that, but I think the more we talk about it, it's like it would be important for that elevator to go all the way up, for that space to be accessible. Right now, our advanced learners are up there.
But we'll say that this plan does eliminate one of the classrooms that was that was here, but we feel that we're gaining that in the other buildings, and so that would alleviate some of the the crowding that's happening at Central, since Central takes on a lot of the students that come out of Ames, so that is just to be noted here as Now, again, it's a complicated site, it's a complicated building with many levels, there are there were a lot of studies internally that we did to take a look at options for how to correct this, and we feel that this is the simplest, efficient way to do that and the most economical. There are other ways, but they're more invasive, and definitely are going to take a lot more money and a lot more work and studies to understand them.
I have a question. Was there any consideration of putting the principal's office in the main entrance on the lowest level, since it's a ramped level, rather than using?
We did.
I think what families might consider, what one of the most beautiful classrooms that we have, which to view.
We did, we did discuss that, from a security perspective, the idea behind having an office at the front of the building is that the vantage point that you have from there to the street level is seeing people and whoever's coming up to your building, that's a very important advantage from a security standpoint, so from that alone, and then is there anything else you want to offer?
Could you use cameras for that?
Certainly you can, but that is is recommended by security consultants to be at that level.
I just know, yeah, there might be some families that would have a problem with that first level.
Another thing to consider too is, one of the proposals we talked about is the proximity of the nurse's office in the office, and what this proposal allows is that for that proximity, you have to please.
Could you split, you know, the server's downstairs, but could you flip a small group small group space to the nurse's office?
I think we're coming out a little too strongly against basement office.
I don't know, just asking, because I know families.
Could you say that again, I'm not sure I understood how that relates to Sherry's statement.
What I, I think the facilities committee is coming out a little too strongly against the very lower level of office. I'm supporting Sherry's.
Oh, now I understand, okay.
I think that, I mean, there's a simple trade-off here, because these lower levels not really a basement, and the first floor is not really a first floor in the sense that it is at Blythe, there's sort of a, there's an elevation, so it's sort of like a half, like a half basement and a half.
Garden level, I call it.
Garden level and a little bit more.
But if you've ever had a child in the garden level classrooms, it's a little depressed.
So I agree with you, both my, both my kids were in that office that we're talking about here, and it's a wonderful classroom. I think the trade-off here is, if you put it on the lower floor, then it's accessible for, it's handicapped accessible for everyone, you go right in.
Right.
Any kind of work that you would do in terms of securing the entrance way would be would be totally obscured by those stairs, so you could do whatever you wanted from appearance-wise, and and I think as Sherry mentioned, it seemed like, or maybe maybe Joel, it seemed like you'd take the small group learning or the server room and put the nurse's office in one of those places, so, you know, if the camera solution would work, which I think I've seen a reason why camera, having cameras would be.
I don't know.
Any worse than having, looking out the window, I think there's a lot to be said for, for, you know, for the sake of the students and also for accessibility, for putting it on the sort of a garden level as opposed to the one and a half or half-story, whatever you want to call it.
I'm also just considering, you know, I've talked to people that have lived here for generations, and they talk about that their grandfather and grandmother went to in that classroom, it's just, I personally didn't go through that, but I know there is an attachment to the way that we use some of these spaces historically for the families, and it's something, it's just something to consider if you want community buy-in.
I think it's a strong point, Sherry, and that, you know, being a part of the process and all the time that we spent on this, I, you know, I hesitate to go back and take a look at it, but in this case, I would go back and take a look at it.
I completely hear your point and see it, I personally would rather go with the idea of this as security being the top option as opposed to the beautiful classroom, so I don't know if there's somebody we can talk to about to to discuss that, because for me, the top priority of securing the front entrance is to make sure it's a a very safe and secure and in standard with what, maybe our police department and.
No one's gonna disagree with that, but I think the argument, the question you're gonna make is why, why is it more secure?
Well, that's what I'm saying, can we add, can we, can we get some hard facts and to answer that question?
Right, exactly, why is it?
Yeah, I agree.
To that point, I did walk over there this evening, and the windows that look out from what, well, we know there's the reception office area, if you change the landscaping a little bit, there is a view of the sidewalk that goes up to the school, and I think there are ways to address the security issues.
You would need to have cameras regardless, right?
You'd have, yeah, you'd have to have cameras.
Because even if you're at the first floor, if you're close to the building, you look out the window, you're still not going to see someone, right, if they're very close, you're gonna have the cameras anyway.
I think I think it's simply, like I said, I don't think we should be dismissing the basement office quite so quickly, or perhaps garden level office would be a better description, and that's really where I'm going with this.
And I think, you know, one of the things that I really should have said at the beginning is, I feel like we did a lot of, it felt like we did a lot of looking at the Ames concept ideas, and some of this, I know, there'd been a question, are these the same design ideas that we had looked at way back when, was it summer, and they really are, but we really felt, well, we hadn't really applied to that, sort of the problem solving around the why and the committee work, so these are really very similar design ideas with this idea that this is really, I consider really the first opportunity for the board to really weigh in.
Yeah.
And so, you know, it certainly sounded like there's a strong sentiment that we want to revisit that, I know there are security consultants and such, and so we could certainly talk, you know, I think the question is sort of refer it back to the committee with that as sort of a key question, and, you know, see what what we can do in terms of thinking that through differently.
I think the architects did a fantastic job considering that multipurpose room space that is absolutely overneeded for many years, I mean, they're so cramped in the cafeteria, so that was genius kind of restructuring and could really change both schools, like Pete was saying, for the schedule, so that, I think, is amazing.
So if we're, so with the option of the basement or the garden, shall I say the garden level?
Right, because it's not really.
I used to live in a garden condo and it was the basement, I'm just gonna tell you.
I have a garden level office.
Which is fine, yeah, which is fine, whatever, I just want to make sure, are we still, like, I really appreciate the idea of making Central accessible by elevator on all four floors, so if that is an op, if, say we, say we explore that option and that's something we decide to go with, like, are we still supporting the the fact that we're making Central accessible?
I think.
Because I think.
As we get to potentially schematic level, we should be looking at what is the incremental cost of putting that elevator to the fourth floor, I understand the concerns, but money is not, resources are not unlimited, and as I look at the first floor plan, could you flip to that with Carrie? I'm slightly concerned that the cost to modify the floor to make the ramp will get us into some structural issues and cost may be an issue there as well, depending on the construction of.
So can I re- ask a question of clarification, the elevator where you have it is in that kind of outside your current office little?
No, it's in the corner, basically.
The courtyard, that tiny courtyard next to where your window looks out and those, that hallway.
Basically across in the.
It's an exterior space existing, and it's that kind of small, funny, delight comes in alcove frame, okay, thank you.
Do you know what fraction of Central, if we were to install the elevator, as you've indicated here, what fraction of the total area, square footage of Central would become accessible if you had the elevator as you've, as you've drawn it?
Well, in conjunction with the ramp, that's a little bit different of an answer.
Yeah, with the ramp, let's just say everything you've done, what accessible would be accessible or not accessible, however you want to answer that?
Yeah, I would say maybe a little over a third.
A third would become accessible or would not be accessible?
Would become.
Become accessible, so the total amount you'd be able to access would be one-third of the entire.
That's correct, yeah, it's impossible, well, it's not impossible, but it's financially a little bit more to to make everything accessible.
And it meets the requirements of like, when there's a renovation, you are required to make a certain percentage to go along with that renovation accessible, so.
Right, right, if we were to, it's the types of renovations that you would be doing here are not necessarily the kind that would require an elevator, but they would be recommended, obviously, in order to access the spaces that we'd be developing.
Could that be the similar size to the one we put in at Hauser, kind of that all-purpose elevator functional space?
You know, forgive me, I don't know exactly the size of that of that elevator, we'd have to study that and determine what the best type of elevator would be for that, for that area that is built in.
So either, for me, just where I'm at, wherever the office is located, and I think it's important to make sure that that section's accessible, I think the multipurpose room to the, you know, like, I just want, okay, I just want to make sure.
Actually, that's why I originally, and other Jeff has come up with a thought about this too, is that accessibility, the way it works for this building, which is going to the garden level, that's why I'm more in favor of putting the office there, is because that's the first spot that you hit the accessibility.
No, I understand, yeah, no, I think it's definitely something we need to explore, but what I find encouraging right now is, is just a general sense that this change is needed, a change is needed, so that's, that's, you know, that's great, and it's gonna, we see how much it's gonna cost and, you know, that could change, but, you know.
And those are my comments about the fourth floor also, the tower was, at first I thought, let's just cut it off, and I thought, that's really like, it's like letting a lot of space sort of, I don't want to say be wasted, but.
The marginal cost of just extending the elevator is probably minimal.
And Carrie, isn't putting in an elevator in a courtyard a lot easier than renovating the space that we did here to put the elevator? All right, when, I'm guessing it would be functionally easier to put in than the one that we had to revamp this whole?
It'll have its own set of challenges, but yes, it would be, obviously, it's not, you're not carving out space in an existing building to do it, so.
Carrie, I think we're actually, if not counting square footage, but rooms, it looks like you can get about 18 rooms accessible with the elevator.
That's great.
Versus nine not accessible, so, there's additional thought that needs to go into that, because that doesn't include places like the library or the gym, but I.
Right, right, right.
Well, we discussed all of that in committee and understood that, yes, the, you know, the library was not accessible, the gym.
I'm not using that as a criticism.
Oh, no.
What I'm saying is that actually, the elevator gives more accessibility than I even thought at first.
I definitely think it's a market improvement than what we currently have, that's, I mean, no, that's great, I mean, great feedback, and this is definitely the phase we're at where we need to, you know, flesh it out and.
So with the central design option, it's really only one option in the recommendation, with the added square footage of 660 square feet, that is just really for the elevator, and then renovating 7,900 square feet at a total cost of 1.5 million.
With the asterisk on the separation of planned parking, is that becomes its own unique and separate project? and separate project?
And so, just one additional question, on the fourth floor, Martha, you, I thought you said earlier the technology group is going to move to Harlem.
Right.
But it's still on here, it's indicated that it's still drawn in, it's labeled as technology.
That's just an existing label.
That's, that's not, that's not the intention.
We don't know what the, we don't know what that space would be.
But it's not.
It's hard for us to label those.
It's not for the technology.
No, 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 they would vacate.
No, but it would be for, for equipment, you could put people and children, or I wouldn't put children on the fourth floor, I think that's a little silly, but.
Well, children are up there now for advanced learners.
Well, like, I know, it's a trust. It's a waste.
Obviously, that would.
I mean, you can, if we, if we needed it.
That would need to be debated.
We've been brainstorming what we would, but it would be programming space, like you've mentioned conference room.
Conference room, so my itinerant space, upstairs with my, is a periodically, but not spending, if they're like.
Yeah, where they're running up.
Now, I was there for maybe 60 minutes, 75 minutes at a time, a couple days a week, but not, you know, half day.
Sure, sure.
Different kinds of moving in and out spaces. Could be a larger, smaller space for social work, kids are psychology, psychology office, could use the office that Mrs. Schuck currently is.
Yes.
So I mean, there's all, those are just ideas for the mission.
Right.
But it becomes usable space for students and staff.
Right, right, right. I'm just asking.
But not for technology, it's labeled technology and special education as the current use, so it's, that doesn't mean that's the future use.
Right. Okay.
On the list of the educational and facility needs that Martha mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, four of those apply to Hollywood School. First of all, we'd like to secure the front office, the front entrance to the building. Secondly, we feel that we need to account for a space for existing itinerants in all student support areas. We need to get staff members and students off the stage and out of the hallways into appropriate learning areas. Another priority is separation of play and parking. And finally, we'd like to consider a multipurpose room for lunch and large group learning experiences.
So the first option we're going to look at is that secured entrance option. Very similar to the solutions at Blythe and at Central. It involves flipping a classroom from the front of the building and the office, which is currently located here. Currently, you enter this door and are buzzed in and expected to walk over and check into the front office over here currently. Ironically, the aesthetic approach to the building would lead you to believe that this is the entrance of the building. It's got some, I believe limestone, and some, you know, it looks a little bit more detailed. It does architecturally look like the entrance to the building.
Did it ever function that way?
Yes.
I would imagine it would have, and then in addition, you know.
Yeah, and they closed it off.
Something was renovated. I believe this was something that had changed, you know, later on. So what we would do is create this existing vestibule and make that, that lockdown area where you can access the reception, the main office, and then go through there to access the rest of the building after a vetting process. So this one actually works a lot better than the others as it's less physical impact to that, front of that building, and we're just taking advantage of the existing architecture. So that's good. And that is the solution to this. Just blew that up a little bit, looks like that.
So I know one, I'm just going to mention one concern I had about it when I looked at it, was that that, that classroom, that is currently the office that would become a classroom, is only 560 square feet. And so I know, talking with Kim and Pam Shaw, that that would become, you could probably speak to it better than I could, that I wanted verification that that size of a room was actually usable and good for kids, so that was something we talked about.
The others are in the order of seven to 800.
Right.
That room is a resource classroom. There's one and a half special ed resource teachers that utilize that space, and there may typically be two, up to two small groups of students, student learning that happens within the confines of that space. So groups of five or fewer students.
So you're, you were pretty confident that that size room could accommodate the needs of that room?
Yes.
Because that was definitely something that I saw, and I was like, oh, that seems a little small.
I know, that's a large space to change from student use.
Thank you for looking out for our kids.
So with the design option one, it does address the secured front entrance, but does not account for the need for the existing itinerants and student support areas. Would have appropriate number of classrooms to address both the kindergarten, would not incorporate a multipurpose room. There are a lot of the elements that really didn't apply to Hollywood. And again, the separating play and parking to be addressed later. So there's no actual square footage added, 1,400 square feet renovated at a cost of 400, 50,000.
So the second option includes answering some of those concerns that Kim just spoke about, and we'll get into that a little bit more. So adding a small addition to the backside here of Hollywood. Same secured entrance configuration, but then we're able to add on a multipurpose space and small group flexible spaces as well, on the backside. We also increase the square footage of the library slightly, it's a little limiting in what's, what's there currently. We displaced a storage room, but that will be regained somewhere else in the building. Martha, look at that. That solves those itinerant needs. The dining is no longer overlapped with the physical education space. The security is answered, and we're able to take a look at the library as we wanted to, as, as the rest of the buildings as well.
Do you offer?
Also, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go on.
I just wanted to mention that the OTPT and psychiatrists are, psychologists are on, on top of the stage, and that's something that would be corrected.
So they would be moved off the stage?
No, that would be very nice.
Very important part, and I forgot, I neglected to mention that.
Are they're moved into the addition area? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes, in that small.
Into one of the small groups?
Yes.
Okay. Do you, and I'm not asking that you've got these memorized, but do you know how the size of the Hollywood library compares to Blythe and Central?
Well, Central.
And if you don't, that's, I'm asking an offhand question.
I definitely do. I think that this one is, is smaller than all of them.
Base, there's Blythe on here at 760 is what you have on your plans.
Yeah, that is actually added square footage from the corridor, so that's, it's smaller than what it is, so it'd be 700, so about the same size as the classroom that's next to it.
Right.
So, and you said.
You're saying what you've written on here is 760 for Blythe?
That's what it currently is.
Currently.
That's the current library in Blythe.
At Blythe. And that's not going to change, right?
Right.
I mean, that's, we don't have any, we don't have any proposals to change that.
Yeah, so the existing one is the.
Correct.
So the existing Hollywood space currently is the smallest.
Right, so I guess the consideration, I guess, and I guess it's more, more general than the question of the library, is that if we're going to be making Blythe into one and a half or two sections, we'll be increasing the number of students by either 50% or 100%, which I think is a good thing.
Right.
For those students, is a good thing, but we're not, the library's not growing, right? So we're going to have it 760 first, we have a library with twice as many, potentially twice as many students as Hollywood.
Depends on how it's used.
We have to be, I think, conscious about scaling relative to students.
Yeah, but it'll also have a 2,000 square foot multipurpose room. Yes. That, you know.
Does that, but that's going to, that's going to have to include the art room and the music room too, right?
Music would go into that. Art would go, Kaismer, help me out here, where is she?
If we were two full sections.
I think she was going to put a band, a music band and orchestra, we're utilizing the multipurpose, right? And also have a silent space. Currently employed, one classroom is like Hollywood, typically one classroom is tied to access, accessing the library. And she also would use it at times for a recess, but if she had a multipurpose room space, she'd be able to use it that.
I hear what you're saying, though.
Well, so it's like a more general question then, and this is a more general question I actually have, which is not independent of the library. Have we looked at, so there's two parts to the facilities plan. Part of it is that we're just sort of building and renovating, but also part of it is we're moving programs, we're moving the preschool, we're moving students from Central to Blythe over time. You mentioned, Martha, I think, the possibility of moving Ladsy at some point to Central. So they're moving programs, moving potential uses, and have we looked at what you did very, very initially, the initial thing you did for us, which is looking at square footage per student at these schools? Have we looked at that sort of with the new allocation of students and programs that we're envisioning currently and with the proposals that we, that you're showing us? They say, well, what is the final state? Not just with the current students, but then sort of what we think the steady state's going to be compared to what we started with, and we should be seeing a convergence in a way, right?
Yes, and I agree, that could be a logical next step, certainly, as long as we're headed in the correct direction here, and then to take a look at that.
Right, like, what you're saying, like, the size of the addition could alter based on that.
Things into scale, correctly.
I mean, the thing, the thing that I always think about with Hollywood is that Hollywood, because they are the, you know, they're in their, across from First Avenue, people don't want to leave their community to go to their elementary. So those class sizes, as we've seen, have always been a little higher, and I think that's something that the board has been embracing, that, you know, we can't really think of Hollywood as being like part of the flexible system. So that for me, when I'm thinking about Hollywood, I want to make sure that there's enough space, we're adding enough space to accommodate these larger class sizes that have become the norm there, which, which I think the community likes and.
Well, they asked for, yes.
No, right, no, I think it's, I think it's a good thing, but I want to make sure that when we're thinking about building, we're still, even though it's a one-section school, it still needs, has the same needs as the other schools. And so while it feels like the addition might be a little large, I just want to keep that in mind.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, and that's a perfect segue to something that I almost forgot, which is that.
Oh. Well, I did it for you right there.
Dave Barzati unfortunately could not make it tonight, but he did want me to read his statement because he was, he wants, has some things to say about the facilities plan stuff. I will not read it as eloquently as he will, but he'll try to get it best, okay? So good, this is his statement.
It's very official, Dave Barzati's statement.
Good evening, while I'm unable to attend the committee of the whole meeting today given travel commitments with my work, I would like to comment on the facilities plan. First, I would like to thank all those who've been involved with the process, Linda Rich, District 96 staff and the community. They've all gone above and beyond in their time and effort to come up with a meaningful and actionable plans for the schools. The schools are bursting at the seams, and I'm very excited about the plans for Ames, Hollywood, Blythe and Central. I echo the statements that the addition of, the addition at Ames will solve a number of space problems at Blythe and Central. It has been noted that Hollywood has extreme space issues, and the staff there have been very creative with their approaches and have gone to great lengths to make the space work. Nevertheless, the space situation is far from ideal, given the many activities and classes that take place at Hollywood do so in less than ideal environments. For example, the school psychologist has their work on the stage, this in my opinion is unacceptable. I would strongly encourage the board to slate Hollywood as the next school that is addressed in our expansion. Addressing the plan for Hollywood, I've been approached by multiple members of the Hollywood community inquiring why we, the board, don't consider a purchase agreement with the Hollywood Community Association. Personally, as one board member and a Hollywood parent, I'd be very interested in purchasing the Hollywood house for expansion at Hollywood, for expansion at Hollywood School. However, at this point, the HCA has expressed no interest in selling their property to the school board. One of the primary goals of the master facilities plan is to provide more space to account for the growth that has occurred in our enrollment of schools. The goals for Hollywood School is far more than just a playground issue. In addition, the goal is to remove the cars from the play area for the school. I'm very open to working with the HCA to find a creative solution to achieving these goals to this, of the school and the district. We all, we all want to make our schools better for our youngest members of our community. Primary goal is to do what is best for our students, the staff and the community. I am honored and privileged to work on behalf of the community, but the board needs to hear from you. I encourage the community to review the design proposals for all the schools and provide us your input on how we can accomplish the goals that are outlined in our master facilities plan. Please feel free to reach out to me, this is Dave Barzati. If you would like to discuss this further, thank you.
Me, Dave Barzati. So anyway, what I would think the next step, if this is the plan we're going with is, we would make sure that the addition is the right size, you know? Although I do think, like Dave mentioned in his letter, like, having anybody on the stage is ridiculous, like, having, you know, Hollywood, while their needs, their needs are the same, their student body is smaller, they still have the needs and they still need the space. So I think, for me, it's imperative that we make it, we make the space, it's just.
We make the space, but we scale it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I agree with you, that's not, I don't, there should be no question that we should not have, or if given the opportunity to use our resources, that here is a definite need of privacy and giving the itinerant staff a good place to work. I don't think that's in question. I have Carrie's space study here and just because I could do it. Blythe has, according to this.
And this is two years old, so.
Well, but it's.
Right, no, I'm just, I'm just stating out loud to people, no, it's two years old.
You did the reanalysis though for us?
No, I just, I just looked at it. Blythe's library is 780 square feet, Central's is 1,800, Ames is 850, and Hollywood is 700. So that's where, that is the square footage.
What was the Ames proposal for the new library? Does a new, was it 1,000 or something like that? What was the new one?
About right.
Yeah.
I can look it up.
It sounds right.
And I'd like to just mention, there are some times when square foot per student, per child is an important factor when you look at classroom space. However, when you look at more flexible spaces like a gymnasium, a school of 130 students, if you take a school with a regular-sized gymnasium, and there are 500 students in that school, you divide the space of the 500, the gymnasium.
Right.
You're going to add up to a square footage per child. You take that multiplier and take a school of 130 children.
And it's going to.
You're going to have a, a small space that's too small of a gym. So there need to be certain considerations when we look at square foot per student.
Right, there's different ways to do the calculation, and there, you get slightly different numbers, how you're doing, the planning to do it, so you're definitely right, it's not, it's not a hard and fast thing.
It becomes like a minimum size for.
Yeah, there's certain, there's certain strengths you have to satisfy.
Yeah, no one's suggesting a tiny little.
Right, like, I would, I would assume Hollywood's gym is larger than Central's. I don't know the square footage, but it's.
It's 2,300 according to this.
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't know what Central's is.
Depends on the plans, the plans change from time to time.
The Ames is on, sorry, the Ames is on 1,500. 1,900 square feet.
Well, you have to consider the population of each school is much different.
No, I'm just, no, I'm just saying.
With regards to gym, you need the same-sized space for basketball regardless of the size of the team.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim.
And, and in our district of historical buildings, the gyms are, like, differ greatly, but that doesn't mean that, like, we should cut Hollywood's gym in half, or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, no one would suggest.
Our facilities are.
Right, I mean, another way to do the calculation is to look at the number of large classrooms and the number of small, in terms of itinerant spaces, and divide that by the number of students, is another way of doing that calculation. I think.
Maybe removing like the gym and the library.
Exactly, there's different ways you can do the calculation, you get slightly different numbers, they all kind of point in the same direction, but I think, yeah, it should be, it should be done in some level.
So the recommendation is for design option two, which checks all the applicable boxes, including the renovation and reconfiguration of the library media center. It adds on a total of 2,500 square feet and renovates 2,000 square feet at a cost of 2.2 million.
The other thing I wanted to make sure that we continue to talk about is that we do have, you know, community feedback, gathering more feedback is really very much on the facility advisory committee's agenda. We really wanted to sort of continue to move through this design process, and then we've been looking and thinking about ways to continue to engage the community. After the January 16th, I did an email with a survey attached, and I'll do the same thing following, as a follow-up to this meeting. But we will get likely more, we're moving toward a schematic phase, is getting schematic design or schematic drawings out to the community, getting feedback, you know, sharing sort of information. There will still be areas to continue to think about, whether it's outdoor space, library spaces, you know, kind of even security and getting more input in those areas. So that's to be continued. And then really, the next slide is, I forget who has the clicker here, is just any questions from the Board of Education? But we've been having, I think, a really valuable dialogue along the way here.
Cost estimates, thank you very much.
We're going to hit into cost estimates, but I want to thank Sheri for relinquishing her half an hour for Education Committee ahead of time. But I do think we don't want to let this meeting end without hearing from our project manager and understanding how he got these costs together. Do you mind stepping to the microphone?
That was going to be my question, can we hear from Remesh?
Yeah.
So first, let me give you a quick background. I worked in the school district in 2012, doing the renovation of Blythe, Hollywood, and Central. So I'm very familiar with the projects out here, the challenges that you face. I mean, they were the same challenges even then, you know, accessibility, the environmental issues that you deal with, older buildings, historical issues. So we addressed some of those issues at that time, and I can see they're coming back again because of, you know, the student population has grown, there are issues out there. My company, Vissara Construction Services, is now 25 years old. We do approximately 100 to 150 cost estimates each year, ranging from a couple of hundred thousand to over 150, 200 million dollars. So we are very well versed with the cost database in the community in the Chicagoland area. That's the, so I want to reassure you that the numbers are not just plug numbers. There's a reason why we put those numbers together the way you see them. We could have given you a range, but the real issue is we are looking at these numbers from 10,000 feet at this stage. The program is still moving, it hasn't been fully defined. I mean, I could throw out 58 questions on each of those to Carrie, and based on those answers, the numbers would change. And so if we had given you a range of, say, X to 2X, obviously, everyone prefers the X, the lower number. And, you know, while the reality would have been it's closer to 2X because of how the program changes. So the reason you see that single number is because of that reason. And there are going to be a number of changes based on the studies that the architect comes up with. When the engineers come in and they start looking at the requirements out there, we need to study whether the electrical needs out there are sufficient, whether the mechanical needs are sufficient. In some cases, we may be able to tie into what's existing. In other cases, we need to put a whole new system in. There could be a structural impact, there's environmental impacts. Now, we have some contingencies in there, but based on how the design proceeds and how we package this whole thing together. Well, these are standalone projects, so if we package three of them together, there could be some economies of scale. We could bring the numbers down, based on the timing when we release the projects, the numbers can come down. So all those need to be taken care of. So rather than giving you an exact limit, this is an estimate. That's my logic that I'm using right now. So going forward, I really want to come back here and say, we saved 15% rather than say we went up 15%. So let's look at it right now from a much higher perspective, with the idea that we'll redefine and refine these numbers going forward. So that's just the two minutes we'll be on, there we are.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Remesh?
Just, I mean, just to take the example of Central, I think you sort of estimated, I don't know, it was 3.5 million?
Sure.
Like, how did you come up with that number roughly? I mean, it's no external work, it's all internal, except for the elevator, I mean?
Correct. Now, I could ask the question out here, what's the size of the elevator? Obviously, we're trying to make it ADA accessible. But then my question would be to the other parts of the school may say, we want to use it as a freight elevator too, to move stuff up. So the poundage of the elevator changes from, say, 2,500 to a 3,500 pound. They're totally two different costs. The next part of it is, do all the doors open the same direction? I mean, based on what we look at. So there are some assumptions that we have made in our process. Is there sufficient electrical capacity to feed this elevator? Do we need to run a new line from the powerhouse to this one? How much will that cost? So we have numbers that we have built in, so it's not just purely a square foot model. We have the detail, but we need to refine that detail. I mean, the exterior skin of the building, I mean, we need to say. We're going to match the existing, so it's brick. So are we, you know, what's the composition of it? Is it going to be CMU brick, or is it going to be metal stud wall and brick? We need to look at all those elements in there to meet code and the requirements of the school. And we look at all these elements to define the number, but we feel confident that the numbers that we presented are a good number to start off with. And based on the schematic designs that Carrie's company, DLA, comes up with, we'll refine the numbers, and you'll see a lot more detail coming out on the numbers, which you can question. But as we move up, we actually start getting contractor input as well. We'll be reaching out to vendors, and they will give us numbers and say, based on what you're showing us, this is what it costs. But they may give us alternates too. They may say, are you going for a geared elevator? Or are you going like a traction elevator? Are you going for a wholeless elevator? We'll get pricing on both, we'll give you options. So all those will be developed and presented so that there's a comfort level on what you're purchasing, rather than getting to construction documents and saying, oh, we really can't afford it. You'll see all the numbers developed as we go forward, and we'll be working very closely with Jim to get the capital improvement plan within range that you have. With the monies that you have, we'll try and build it out based on that. We package them together and say, we package these three together, we can bring these costs down if construction is held within a specific range.
How often do your numbers come out?
I make mistakes all the time. No.
I'm just saying, in general, do you usually... I'm just looking for a general...
Absolutely.
Because we have a lot of broad numbers here.
Right, so we are very accurate by the time we get to construction documents, okay? Because what happens is, we always have a design contingency and a construction contingency. The design contingency allows DLA to expand and contract based on how the design progresses. The construction contingency is used for dollars that are discovered during construction. For example, unless, until you open the wall, you're not going to know if there's anything existing in there. So all those numbers will be built in, and this is what I mentioned to Martha too. When we did the project six years ago, we were not involved in the design. We had brought in at construction, yet there was zero dollars in change orders, zero. So that's my greatest contribution that I can tell you that our company will bring, that there's confidence in the numbers that we generate. And we want to work with you, work with the team, to make sure we get it right the first time. And we'll try and tick all the boxes, there are lots of boxes to tick in this one. All the consultants, you know, they'll give us feedback. We'll read the reports, and they'll say, you need to identify, are the soil conditions good out here? Then we'll ask the next question, are we going to hit water? I mean, are there issues out there? Do we need to do de-watering? What are the issues, the environmental, EPA? Who do we need to talk to? All those questions we brought out, we'll have a checklist, start ticking them off so that we minimize the risk to the school district. We don't want to start construction and then come back and say, oops, we need to spend another million dollars.
Joel, questions for Remesh?
No, I think what Remesh is bringing to the table is essential to make this viable in terms of what we want to, the resources we want to expend, and the resources in this case are money. The fact that you're going to work with Carrie and think about ways to potentially modify the design to get the end goal, but find maybe better or less invasive ways to do things is also a plus.
I mean, it's a team effort. I have the ideas delivered as a team, making sure we get it right. I think we're a great team out here, I see familiar faces, and obviously, keeping everyone informed is important.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. All right, Sheri, turn it over to you.
Finally, I turn it over.
Yeah, for the minutes.
It's not too bad. So everyone knows for, well, the last couple of years, we've had PARK. We're going to hear about how we have some incremental changes there. Of course, we're getting a new acronym and name because we need more of those in education, but we'll get used to it, and we're going to hear about the Institute Day we just had, Teaching and Learning Update, and the Data Management System. So a bunch of smaller items I would...
Yeah, they're small, and I'll try to be efficient and still clear. So no presentation, just updates. So Illinois Assessment of Readiness is going to replace PARK, so your new acronym is IAR. I don't know, Pete said I could call it IR, but I'm not a pirate, so I won't. Basically, it's not going to be that much different. The item bank remains exactly the same, the standards remain exactly the same. And in fact, the platform for delivery this year will remain exactly the same because we couldn't, the state couldn't procure a new vendor yet, so it's going back to Pearson for this year. There are some slight differences. They took away a math unit from grades three through five, so there's one less math unit. And the math sessions at middle school are shortened from 80 minutes to 60 minutes. An ELA across the board, a session was eliminated. However, at Central and Hauser, we will be field testing. So Central and Hauser's ELA units will look exactly the same this year. Every school will be field tested likely within the next three years. This assessment by '21, '22 is going to be going adaptive. So similar to MAP where it's supposed to be able to be adjusted for students based on how they're responding. But that's not for a couple of years down the road.
That's not yet.
Not this year and not next year. So basically, it'll be pretty much the same, just a little bit shorter for three of our schools. And almost essentially the same, except for one less math unit, three through five, and less times six through eight in math. So do you have any questions about that? I gave you sort of the unit times to expect, told you where they were different for Central and Hauser, and I gave you the timeline from the state also, so you can see sort of how it's going to be.
That's a general apparent question.
Yes.
An apparent level mean less days for testing, or is it the same number of days, just less hours?
So it will likely be less time for middle school, but the same number of days. At elementary, we might be able to cut the day by a half a day or maybe a full day.
Would you print it together, or would that be too overwhelming?
That'll be up to the principals to kind of look at how it schedules out, because we also have to make room for all the students who need their accommodations.
Yes.
So that sort of sometimes also drives how long we stretch it out. If there's multiple grade levels on the same day, it's hard to meet all the accommodations. We'll be scheduling that out, and we'll let peers know, just as we have every year, sort of what that schedule looks like by building. So you have the flyers for that one. Any questions on that? Okay. The next thing that Mrs. Clyburn mentioned is I wanted to talk about Institute Day, and this year, we just had one on January 22nd. It was an awesome day. There were over 50 breakout sessions delivered by over 47 staff members. So it was a nice team effort to offer a lot of different opportunities to learn with your peers, which was, is always really well received. The staff really, as you could see by the feedback that I provided in the graphs and the charts, it was our most well-received session since I've been here in terms of positive feedback, so that's exciting. We're 90 to 100% of the people were happy with what they attended. I also wanted to speak to Nexture a little bit, because there was a question that came up about going from six Institute Days down to four Institute Days. And essentially, we will have a wash in terms of the amount of professional time, because the October and February Institute Days will now be full days for staff. We will be accommodating those mid-year conferences on an as-needed basis with parents. It actually will give us more flexibility, because now we're locked in sometimes to February and October, whereas we might need to talk to somebody in December, or we might need to talk to somebody in January. So the conferences will be met within the regular schedule, we'll make accommodations for those. And those two days will be full days for staff learning through professional development. And then the change in the number of after-school professional development sessions will equate to the time that we're losing in that sixth Institute Day. So overall, it almost becomes an exact measure of the amount of time of professional learning that we've had. So I just wanted to make that clear for everybody. Any questions on what we did and how it went?
And they made it, they made it at grade levels, is that correct?
So the first hour and a half was spent in grade-level teams for elementary and as a building for Hauser, because they never get vertical time.
Right, that's so important, yeah, I was so happy to read that, yeah.
Yep, so we spent the first hour and a half that way, and then they moved into choice sessions after that. And so actually, that's a perfect segue to my Teaching and Learning Update, because in the Teaching and Learning Update, I provided you...
Because they don't have that opportunity every week.
Yeah, so I provided you with some of the focus of what happened in those grade levels, especially for K through five, because we don't get enough of those opportunities. So in the morning session with the K through five teachers, they spent time really revisiting the ELA standards and our new curriculum that we're only in year two of implementing at that level. And they really got to spend some time looking at how they're emphasizing the standards, the common assessments that they're implementing, and then planning backward around common assessments. And it was a great morning of robust conversation. And that was coupled with a full day these past two weeks with ELA by grade level. So it was a great piggyback to then really looking at how to focus in and be efficient with our pacing to make sure that we're hitting our priority standards and getting the outcomes we were expecting from our students. So really doing a lot of digging deeper with our program now that we've had it for a year. Then in addition, some of the other highlights that I wanted to update with respect to collaboration and collaborative planning is we've made a concerted effort for our schools to be able to cross-pollinate their collaborations. So we've been using Google Hangout pretty successfully at the elementary levels for our single-section and multi-section schools to pair. And at grade levels, it's happening weekly or bi-weekly, depending on the grade level and the schedules within the buildings. And it's been really successful in terms of monitoring pacing and monitoring planning for instruction and sharing ideas and problem-solving with students. So I think all the principals would speak to the value that's been placed on that within the buildings this year. There's also been an intentional focus on pacing and mathematics and planning backward from the end of the year to where we want to be. Our math intervention team has done an amazing job of really digging in. Since Mrs. Stepke shares the two smaller schools, she's been collaborating with the two interventionists at the larger schools, and they're working as a team to look at what standards are being emphasized, where those major standards occur within our units of instruction, and then how teachers are planning backward to make sure we're moving through the curriculum the way that we should be. They're also developing some tools around the major content standards as well to make sure that teachers are very aware of where those are falling out within our programmatic scope and sequence. So they're doing some great collaborative work to support the math. Principals have been utilizing their building meeting time to really study student work, looking at assessments, analyzing that work, determining how to provide supports and enrichments for students based on their demonstration of their understanding in both those core areas. And then we've continued with the math coaching at the buildings. And again, that's providing a level of consistency and an opportunity for collaboration. So we just actually planned this past week, there's a third-grade teacher in two of our buildings that are both going through coaching, and they're going to do lesson studies with each other and get out and view each other's instructional practices, and then debrief together with the math coach. So that's, again, another way that we're building in some collaborative mechanisms to share best practices in teaching and learning in those areas. We're really hopeful that these concentrated efforts are going to really make a difference in continuing to grow our student achievement the way that we would expect across all of our schools. So we're looking forward to continuing to monitor our data, look at our results, and hopefully, in the spring, see the fruits of that labor. And then also, when we report back in the fall on student achievement, see that as well. So student achievement questions?
Just a comment, I'm really glad to hear about the grade-level collaboration via Google Hangout.
Yeah, we've worked really hard on that.
We all hope that that will be particularly impactful for the single-section schools.
I think, and the principals are all here, I think you, we've seen a difference already just in the communication, the collaboration, the pacing, the sharing of strategies and the ideas that are going back and forth. And when they're coming together as teams, those relationships are actually more developed. I even noticed in PD, they're not isolating themselves by their schools anymore either. They're like cross-pollinating where they sit, even when they're working together, so. It's definitely showing up physically.
And you had a high percentage of participation for those single-section schools for...
Yes.
Did you have every grade level?
We have third, yep, well, every grade level, third, fourth, fifth are doing like weekly or bi-weekly. First and second, it's a little spottier, I think. But we haven't yet... For first and second. Yeah, they're actually physically going to, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah. Second at Hollywood for sure, too. Yeah. They've made it a priority this year, for sure. So we're excited about that. So that's all pretty exciting stuff. Then lastly, my data management system, whoa. We were very excited, the team had selected this resource that we thought was going to be, we were sure, was going to be quite robust, and then an acquisition and merger occurred. So we, they're not going to support the platform we had chosen. They do have another platform within that merger and acquisition that they are going to continue to support. So we're going to go back to the drawing board to start researching that. It was very unfortunate, very unexpected. We're getting a full refund on any expenditure that we had planned related to that. So I just wanted to keep you updated that. That journey is going to start starting over again.
Okay.
So reminding me that at least we get a full refund that we hadn't been using the platform for three years.
And not using, yeah.
Correct, yeah, I got on the phone right away when I found out. And so even our training money's coming back, everything that we had invested.
Guys looking at like open-source stuff, I mean, I know, like, there's a tremendous, I don't know about this particular context, but there's a tremendous amount of open-source work that maybe high-quality data... work that maybe high-quality databases are not going to disappear. They're used by a lot of companies that are totally free.
I asked that, remember? And they said it was an issue about trust.
Yeah, we were trying to find something that's compat, well, student privacy, but we were also, so that's a huge piece, is the data privacy piece. And Don can speak to this as well, too, to some degree. But also compatible with our student information system, because those, a lot of the platforms that are built that are focused on education talk to the student information systems automatically and pull in that demographic data and some of those other data pieces that we would want to integrate. So we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board so we can go back and look at open-source options.
But you want to mention Ed 360, so...
Yeah. Ed 360 is a state platform that's created a data management database. It just, it's limited right now in terms of what we can upload. It'll do some of our standardized data, but it won't allow us yet to load sort of our own created assessments. So it would load our map and our PARC, maybe our FastBridge, I'm not sure. I know they do Ames Web, but I'm not sure about FastBridge. I'd have to look. So it would give us some limited database which we are going to opt in to, because it doesn't cost us anything to be a part of that, that the state offers. So at least we'll have our standardized data loaded for now. But yeah, it's a journey.
Any other questions for Merrill? Well, thank you, Ms. Brownlow. That's all for education.
All right. Any other board comments? Business? If not, future meeting dates are March 6, 2019.
Actually, I realize, it's missing the February 20th.
I was gonna say, February, I don't know.
Yeah.
Where'd that go?
February 20th.
Yeah, February 20th.
Business meeting here at Hauser at 7:00. March 6, committee of whole, 7:00 p.m. at Hollywood. March 20th, regular business, 7:00 p.m. at Hauser. April 3, committee of whole at 7:00 p.m. at Ames, and April 17, regular business meeting, 7:00 p.m. at Hauser. So with that, thanks, Sheri.